Okay, the recording started.
All right. We'll call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Holiday Island. Regular meeting of eleven twenty-two, twenty-two at six P.M. A chat with the Fledgled Believers.
The Fledgled Believers to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Dumas.
Here.
Councilmember Elwood. Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
Four members of the council present.
Mr. Mayor, I declare four. I want to make one addition to the agenda, and that's Bernard Anderson came tonight, and he's going to have a request for the council to consider. So, I think I'll put him first under new business, just so that he doesn't have to wait until the bitter end.
I think he should sit here and enjoy.
I know he wants to stay, but... So with that addition, do we have a motion to approve the minutes or the agenda?
I think a motion to approve the agenda is...
My right.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and second any discussion. All the Fledgled Believers.
Aye.
Close. Right, the agenda is approved.
Mr. Mayor, we might want to tell or put it on the recording, tell the audience that the agenda was modified from the one that was originally sent out.
Yes. Yeah, we were going to discuss the budget for next year, but there's still some kind of issues hanging yet that could affect the budget for next year. We don't have to approve the budget until next month, so I pulled it from the agenda. We'll take that up again next month. And I added a under new business, a discussion on the police department. So those are the changes from the originally posted agenda. We have minutes from the meeting of October fourth to approve. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
A motion that we approve October fourth minutes.
I'll second that.
Lynn made a motion, Ken seconded it, any discussion? All the Fledgled Believers say aye.
Aye.
Close. If the minutes are approved, any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or memoriam? Hearing done, we'll move on. Financial statements?
I had sent out the October financial statements some time ago. It is showing, at the end of October, we had a grand total of four hundred and two thousand fifty-nine dollars in the bank. Two hundred and ten thousand eight fifty-six was in the general funds, seventy-five thousand in the reserve fund, and a hundred and sixteen thousand two oh four in the street fund. In the general fund, the receipts for the month were twenty-four thousand eleven dollars of foreign county sales tax and municipal aid and other income. There was a total of twenty-five thousand four sixty-five in revenue. And I note that the municipal aid is already a hundred and nine percent of budget for the two odd holders. And the county sales tax is right at eighty-five percent, which is for ten months would be right on budget. Eighteen thousand nine seventy-five for the month. Excuse me. So six thousand four eighty-nine for the month. Leaving revenue in excess of expense by eighteen thousand nine seventy-five. And most of the expenses are at or below what we have budgeted for ten months. The street fund. Income of twenty-four thousand one eighty-six for the month. And all of that revenue is at or above what we have budgeted for ten months of the year. No expenses for the month, so we ended the month with that a hundred and sixteen thousand two oh three. And for the year to date, we've had two hundred and eighty-five thousand in revenue and three hundred three fourteen, yeah, that would be right, three fourteen in expense because of the street project. So we have spent down twenty-nine thousand dollars from our carryover balance from the preceding year. The general fund reserve, we have seventy-five thousand dollars in balance there, which is what we started the year with, so there's been no change.
Okay, are there any questions on the financials?
I have a question. What's the building dump?
Somebody sold a refrigerator in the ditch, and I've got to pay somebody to get rid of it. Something's happened with the place so far that we've had to clean it up. Actually, it's happened three times, but the first time, I had to clean it up. And then the second time, we paid Carol County Ways to do it. And the third time, I threw the crap on the back of my pickup truck and all went over the very hill. So...
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know what it is. EFP or what is that?
That's a federal tax. It's a federal tax. The electronics federal tax base.
That's just me. Okay, thank you. One of the buildings.
One was on Valley, one was on Quail Run, and one was on Lakeview Lane. Not necessarily, you know, the one on Lakeview was kind of outside, not aligned. But Quail Run, I mean, it was right up the street from somebody's house. The one on Lakeview was right up the street from another, from somebody's house.
Just laying on the side of the street, or?
It was in both, in the Quail Run and in the Valley dumps. They made it as inconvenient as possible. They dumped it in the ditch where it drops off very sharply, so the stuff rolls down the hill ways, so you had to work to get it back out. It would be nice if they...
They just put it on the street?
You know, on the shoulder of the road.
Yeah.
So at least we didn't have to... But the one up here was just dumped right in the middle of the road. So that one was easy to get.
Make a motion to be seconded.
Have a motion and a second. Ken made a motion, very seconded it, to approve the financials. Any further discussion? All the Fledgled Believers say aye.
Aye.
Close. They're approved. Now, before next month's meeting, I guess Wes and I will through the year-to-date spending line item by line item because when they do the, what do they call it, the legislative audit, they look pretty close at how you spend according to your budget. They really don't like you overspending your budget without some sort of approval from the city council. So, and they, I guess they kind of look at it line item by line item. They don't just look at the bottom line and say, well, you're okay, you know?
My understanding is, it depends on how we approve the budget. If we approved the budget line by line, they would look at it that way. But if we approved it more in total, that's what they would look at.
Okay.
Well, that is pretty simple, isn't it? We want to be land.
Well, last year, when, you know, the actual financial statements were the press for the board itself, the detail was there, they wanted to log it, but he dealt with it.
Yeah, and I could talk to them about that, too.
I don't know.
They're not going to be worried about our nickels and dimes, but we want to do it right.
I agree with that, thanks, though.
All right, moving on, standing committees, Jerry, you got anything?
No, I don't think we can add this to the last one.
Okay. Planning Commission?
Planning Commission's working on redoing additional ordinance changes that we had not adopted with the original fortified pages. And we had quite a bit of discussion in our informal conversation last time with the three of us. I've got some documentation to do, get it to everybody else, so we can talk about it again.
Okay. Yeah, even though there was only three of us and a couple in the crowd, it was still pretty productive as far as going through all of the drafts. Okay, no special committees at this time. Under old business, we have a final reading of ordinance number twenty-two dash oh-one-two. I guess just to refresh everybody's memory, this is an ordinance to establish a police department in Holiday Island, which we'll have more discussion on in a minute here. The, we originally, this would, today would have been the second reading. There was no emergency clause in the original ordinance. We were going to do it three readings, but since we're running out of time in the year, I did add an emergency clause to the ordinance. So I'm going to ask that we suspend with the second reading and move to the third reading and approve it, or approve it with the emergency clause. I don't know exactly the technicality of how to do that, but... We'll move to try to approve this in its final form tonight. And after we do the readings, I'll, there have been a couple other minor changes that I made to the ordinance for this final reading based on some things that have developed. So after we do the reading, I will point out what those differences are from the last one. So I will, at this time, entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-two dash zero-one-two, an ordinance establishing a police department for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. And after we, if we get those motions, then we'll leave the ordinance.
I'll move to approve the ordinance two oh-two-two dash oh-one-two.
Lynn made a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Ken Mills made a motion to second. There is also, since I take every last possible minute to make corrections, there's even one sentence different in here than what was disputed to everybody. So Wes, you want to read it?
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-twelve. An ordinance establishing a police department for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas Arkansas Code annotated twelve fifty-two one oh-two states that the governing body of a city of the second class or incorporated town may establish a police department and provide law enforcement services for the city of the second class or incorporated town that will most effectively preserve the peace of the city of the second class or incorporated town, secure the citizens from personal violence and safeguard their property. And that, in lieu of establishing a police department under this section, the governing body of a city of the second class or incorporated town may enter into a contract or interlocal agreement for law enforcement services with an existing law enforcement agency. And whereas Arkansas Code annotated sixteen seventeen twelve oh-three states that any town or city that has a police department but does not have a district court may contribute to the operating expenses of the nearest district court in the county where the town or city is located pursuant to a written agreement. And whereas the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, may wish to contract with the county of Carroll to have the Carroll County Sheriff Department provide law enforcement services to the city. And whereas if the city chooses to the option of a contract with the county of Carroll, said contract would be necessary in order for the city of Holiday Island to establish an interlocal agreement for district court, not be ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. That, A, there shall be established for the city of Holiday Island a police department reporting to the mayor. B, that the mayor has the authority to staff the police department within the constraints of the annual budget passed and approved by the city council. And C, if necessary, in lieu of staffing and equipping the police department, the mayor of the city of Holiday Island is authorized to enter into a contract with the county of Carroll, state of Arkansas, to have the Carroll County Sheriff Department provide law enforcement services. That said, contract must be approved by the city council prior to signing. Since these agreements must be signed and enforced by one one point three in order for the city to enforce the ordinances and emergency as declared to exist. That's approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and it states at eleven twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. Approved, it should be signed by the mayor and recorded to a judge.
Okay, before moving on to comments, I want to add one more thing to the title of the ordinance. I want to add, and declaring an emergency, if there's an emergency clause, usually that's stated in the title, and I'll get to get that put in there. For those that have seen this ordinance before, and from the prior readings, you'll see that I, that the prior form of the ordinance basically only gave us the option of contracting with the county. It, you know, basically, it was written such that it led us to contracting with the county. I wanted to have the ordinance, since this was going to, you know, exist over time, I wanted the ordinance to be written such that we had the option of staffing or contracting. And we say that in the whereas's, but we didn't say it in but to be ordained. So I added that section about the mayor has the authority to staff the police department within the constraints of the annual budget passed and approved by the city council. So that's in a nutshell. And then I added the emergency clause. So that's in a nutshell, the changes that I made to the ordinance as it was originally read. So, now, open it up for comments.
Don't you make a motion to approve the...
Emergency.
Well, the, your changes are the motion instead of just to consider to add some amendments?
Yes, we could change, yeah, to change the motion to read as amended. Who made the original motion? Ken? No, no.
Okay, I'll modify my original motion to, we move to accept ordinance, move to approve ordinance number two oh-two-two dash oh-one-two with the most recent changes we discussed today.
Who's seconded this motion?
I'll stand.
You have a second? All right, so we have the amended motion. Any other discussion?
Are we going to, the discussion later about the police department, et cetera? Does that explain why we're still heading the...
Yeah, yeah, I think we'll patch that out in the other discussion. This, this basically just gives us, on paper, it gives us the authority to go either way, you know, whichever way we need to. You know, the discussion under new business will, will steer us in the direction of which option we want to pick, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, you made the comment that you wanted this to be long-lasting and the bill to be either way. What if an option came in the future that we would contract with Eureka Springs Police Department rather than Carroll County? This wouldn't cover that, then?
Right, then we'd move different ordinance.
All right.
Any other discussion? I will call for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood is absent. Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All present in favor, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the ordinance passes, now we need a motion to accept the emergency clause?
A motion to approve it of an emergency clause for twenty-two dash twelve.
No, we have a motion to approve.
To that, or waive, pass, or reopen the third reading?
Now, we're just going to approve it with the emergency clause?
Well, we haven't waived the second reading.
Doesn't the emergency clause override that or supersede that?
Much closer to committee.
Yes.
I think it does. Okay. All right, Lynn made a motion to accept the emergency clause, we'll have a second?
I'll second that.
Ken seconded it, any discussion? Roll call vote on that?
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood is absent. Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All present in favor, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the emergency clause passes. Okay, moving on then to new business. Mr. Anderson, you're up.
You could depress that button to turn on the green light? Thank you.
I'm requesting to use some city advertising money to help further the effort of IPRO to bring people to Holiday Island to visit, play, and stay at our model homes. IPRO even existed since mid-year 2016. At that time, there was nearly a hundred and fifty homes and condos for sale. Many had been on the market for more than six months, and most were selling at prices at less than eighty dollars per square foot. In addition, lots were being returned, had been returned for several years by the dozens. IPRO jumped in to help out. ISE uses limited advertising funds in the most productive way possible. There was a limited number of funds, and it has been every year in that regard, set by different means, but still limited funds. So we took over making and creating our ads, helping deal with the advertising companies, and then the contract, when it was all settled up, the contract, and was paid for by ISE. And IPRO only paid their own costs. We did not cross over, paying each other back and forth. We believe our efforts were very significant in turning the situation around, and things have certainly gotten a lot better over the years, the last six months.
That's such your fault.
We raised additional funding by taking volunteer membership from existing citizens to pay annual dues to help support the ISE marketing funds. During that time, we created two web, new websites for Holiday Island, including Funding Up Online, that we take care of and answer calls and inquiries, although nowadays it seems like not many people call for information, but we're still doing that. And all that was done at no cost to ISE, including preparing all the ads that they use. State of Arkansas has given us an opportunity to receive leads that they get from their annual travel guide and online presentation. I might note that when we came into being in 2016, we had no ads a big time in the state of Arkansas. That was not being done at all. In addition, we weren't even on the Holiday Island, Holiday Island didn't even exist on their tourism app. So we picked up a period of click. Got the ISE to agree to annual advertisements that ran full page. We eventually moved to full page from a half page, and it cost them about six thousand dollars a year. So it's a significant cost on their part. We've been given a great opportunity here, in our mind, to get additional leads from the, actually from the CJRW, who is the advertising company that works for the state of Arkansas Tourism. They, in addition, their ads in the park travel guide, they have an online service where, again, a lot of stuff is happening nowadays, people are thinking of that. And so they give us a chance to put in a second ad per se, and it's, we're considered to be supporters, partners with the state of Arkansas. So this would be where a player has appeared. We've done this once before in the past. They said, this is a place, hey, it's a good picture map, we'll cozy on this one. Looking for a luxurious vacation or permanent paradise, Holiday Island has it all. The newest city in Arkansas, Arkansas, has something for everyone, iP, biking, camping, points that hold golf, a full-service arena, ride, a table on the lake, and the o-surfs. So, and that probably will get modified and updated for this effort, but there's chip art. And so those people that have received advertisement from the state of Arkansas, which is more of a general advertisement, they have an opportunity, they're given an opportunity by the state of Arkansas to get more specific data and go mark up the places that they want. So we would be getting ads sent, people have said, yeah, we like, we like Holiday Island ads, and they would be getting from us therefore data that has like our flyers, like our pictures of what we're doing, no more notice of our websites and all that type of stuff. So it's a, it's a good opportunity to get people who are really interested in the state of Arkansas and see some interest in our, in our location and our presence where we are. We really have a good location halfway between Branson and halfway between North Arkansas. So we're out of the traffic, but right close to all the, all the active funds. So that's what we try to advertise and do. So the cost is two dollars a lead, and we're asking for a company to provide, get seven hundred leads. Those leads will be turned, they come with names, addresses, emails, phone numbers and stuff, and we are allowed, then we'll turn and put them onto our website, I mean, onto our mailing list that we have. We currently have, let's say, chip mail, mail chip, whatever. And right now, we have twelve hundred ninety-five names, and we're happy to say that the percentage of people who are, have the opportunity to drop off and are dropping off are reviewed. As, but on the other hand, I did see our presentation... as, but on the other hand, I didn't see our presentation of people going to our websites and stuff are not as quite as high as we'd like to see for that effort. Uh, at this point, chimp mail is, uh, mailchimp is, is, we're, we're free. If it's, so we're done lying soon, we'll probably surpass what they want us to have, and we'll probably have to start paying for that, but IPRO will, will put the funds and pay for that. So, we're asking for fourteen hundred dollars. Uh, there's a sense of urgency here because it is coming up. The, uh, new book will be printed here, uh, between now and the first year, uh, to have it available, and the website will be making the changes to, uh, to add, you know, add their partners in and their ads that they want to put in there to get those leads. We've got some pretty favorable terms, uh, on this, or originally wanted their money. Wanted all of it in the first thirty days, but now they have agreed to a, uh, uh, it's been a fifty percent by the first, they've kind of agreed that client, the petty installation space for the client's needs, however, they expect full payment no later than six months from the invoicing date. And the invoicing date will be when a, a final contract comes back and, uh, and is set up. So, it could be probably January, so we'll have to, they, they feel pretty comfortable that they, that we get seven hundred leads in that timeframe. Uh, Northwest Arkansas Association, I believe they're participating in it, uh, the, uh, city, some of the individual city efforts are doing that, and Hot Springs has been doing it for quite a while. So, they're all, seem to be pretty pleased with that. We were not as pleased in the first effort because we didn't really have a, a good email system. It's costing us a fortune to send out packages, uh, but now we're set up to do a little more electronically, a little more efficiently. So, we think we can do a better job with this, with this effort.
IPRO is about, uh, property ownership, right? You're promoting people to move here?
Yes, and it, and it is, Holiday Island is promoting residential ownership. It sounds like dog food, but, uh, that's just what came up with, absurd here. Uh, but we make it clear, we're not, uh, we are not, any of our members are realtors. We don't, uh, make re- real estate recommendations, we don't show property. We strictly have been provided, but that was what needed to be done first before you could start selling lots again, was to get the houses, uh, sold off.
My concern is, uh, we can read the newspaper about our neighboring city, and they have an advertising commission that gets funded through, uh, their rental taxes on residences, and there's been an issue that, uh, some emails, some leads were sent to only a couple of businesses. And my concern, when you get leads and people are interested in property, how do you handle that for the real estate people?
Well, we don't, uh, again, we don't give them any, we, we send them to the sites where they're at, recommend they go to to realtors in Holiday Island and let them pick their own. We, we decided not to get in that area.
Okay.
It doesn't, um, it's a good point not to get in it if you, if you burn from the legal.
Okay.
But that, that's not in our efforts.
If the city decides to support your effort, uh, can we expect some sort of report? You know, what kind of outcomes do we get from seven hundred leads? So, there's some follow-up and accountability?
Yeah, well, that's, uh, that's, there's a little bit, there's difficulty in that, in that the city, when it used to be, uh, HISA, you know, used to be able to hand out lists of new people in and come in, and that helped us do the phone book at that time. Nowadays, we can't get any of those numbers and names, so it's a little difficult. We have to do a little bit of working with the welcome wagon people to try to get their listing of people that they pick up and any other means we can to find out who they are and start preparing names. But I think our best results are when we've got people buying houses, uh, for more than what they're being offered itself for. That's the kind of thing we need to have. Uh, and what we'll tell from our results, we'll put them in a separate group on our, we can work our chip, mailchimp, where this, this will be just seven hundred by themselves. We can watch the results of most of them, as compared to the existing twelve hundred that we have right now.
Okay.
And they'll give you some statistics on how many times they see our websites, uh, how many times they make other inquiries, and so forth. It'll be a little hard to say, oh, yeah, we got five people moved in this week, you know, it's, uh, it's a little more difficult getting that information.
Okay.
One of the, you know, things we get from our desk, uh, quite often is, uh, the state of the park area. The agencies up there, is there, is any of, any of what you're putting out directed to recruiting businesses or?
Well, yes, we have, you know, we have some business partners that, uh, that place, that get, uh, give us, uh, like Marina gave us some free time on that. We do, those people get some engine, usually, uh, most of the time a fungi type of thing, which again, HISA pays for. Uh, we give some notice to people who have helped fund us on different, uh, things.
I'm talking about new business.
Yep.
New business.
Oh, trying to bring new business in. Well, uh, you know, there is north, uh, I would say that we have not used Northwest Arkansas Association to the fullest except that we need to. And so, we've, uh, we've asked for HISA to let, let us start to send members to participate in their, their meetings. They were kind of fell off with COVID and everything else too, but they are now meeting more often. And we think there's some contact information that we can get there as well as some, uh, uh, help with our advertisements to be a little bit more effective. But I don't know how you go, I mean, try to get new businesses here, it's difficult.
One time, I'm just under that, but most of it's following this area.
Yeah, but we really don't have land for a business.
We have a whole lot of empty buildings.
Yeah, well, we do have that, and that's more of a sales, or a sell as a type business, restaurants and stuff like that, which we need. We can use them, although we have trouble filling out business books sometimes, keeping them alive.
You primarily, especially residential.
We're mostly into the residential area, trying to keep that. But again, we're not selling, we're just trying to sell a lifestyle.
Of course, now we get a new household here with a big land, we get more money.
That's right, that's absolutely right.
Turnback.
And, uh, every time we get one of those lots turned into a new building, that's very good. I don't know, I can't, it's a fancy statistic, but for, uh, for a lot of years there, there was not one home built. And now we've had dozens of homes built in the last two, three years, and so, things are looking good in that regard. And a lot of lots, a lot of turn-in, turnbacks have, uh, really slowed down, you know?
I, I see it as, uh, as a, um, a measure of how effective the ad is. You know, if we, if they, if HISA is spending how much on the ad?
Well, for the state of Arkansas, I'm spending about five thousand for a full page ad, but we spend about, uh, we're doing ads for there, we're doing fungi, which is pretty expensive because that's every month.
But I mean, just this particular ad, that you're going to be getting?
Oh, well, we're gonna spend five thousand for the, we spent five thousand because that's what we do for the state. There's the, the charge of this ad, there is no additional charge for that ad that they put in there with our name on it. What the charge is is two dollars for a lead.
I know, but, but the, 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 the full page ad is what gets people's attention, and then they decide, do they want to be a lead or not, you know, to, to get more information?
Well, I think, I think that's true in one regard, but I mean, it's a big book, as you know, the travel guide. There's a lot of ads in there. Uh, we'd attempted to do advertising in Branson for a while, and even, uh, HISA, I mean, HISA, IPRO actually puts their money into additional ad in the golf section, trying to get some recognition there. Uh, when you're, you know, and when you look at that overall deal, you're not, you're, uh, it's, it's hard to find the value that you can put your hands on. However, through this lead opportunity, you're forcing the focus on it. Our picture is very good, it's a picture that, that we use most of the time, where it shows the island, the bridge to the island. It's just, uh, and Marina, you can see part of Marina, it's, it's, it's a catchy ad. And you got the mountains in the background and everything else, the name Holiday Island is catchy. And that's
I guess, I guess my question is, the leads that we're gonna be getting, the seven hundred leads, are those people that were specifically interested in Holiday Island?
No, they were specifically interested, they were specifically interested in the state of Arkansas originally. They got flyers from that, they got this list of partners that are buying leads per se, and will we, will we compete against Hot Springs, will we compete against Northwest Arkansas? Will we be competing against, uh, Cherokee Village, Bella Vista? Uh, I don't, I don't know, Unstilled now is throwing that crew, so, yeah, there's a, there's a crew there that you're joined in with, as to whether they're doing the leads or not. I know that all those bigger ones I mentioned are doing the leads, uh, but I don't know, I'm not sure that I'm getting to your answer here.
Well, yeah, you are, you are. I didn't know if the leads were specifically people that were interested in Holiday Island, or if it was people that were interested in a broad variety of locations. And, uh, but with that said, if you have seven hundred people that are interested in Arkansas in total, and you're, and we're the only location advertising in that book that doesn't respond to leads, then, you know?
You're out of luck.
You're out of luck, yes, exactly.
Yeah.
So, from that standpoint, you gotta pay to be in the game.
Right. Well, this page becomes pretty important, so, uh, we're taking that back, and we'll be doing a revision, trying to per se, make it updated, and then, of course, the pictures really bright and clear, uh, just to see what we have here that we need to try to do it. Also, we're hitting a news, uh, heading to a new approach on our, our webs, our letters that we send out. We send out letters giving a lot of information on Holiday Island, and, uh, and, uh, we've been suggested that we're, we're probably not doing enough to, uh, we're putting too many words and not enough sites for them to go to. People want to, they want to immediately flash to something else, and go to this, and go to that, and short. And so, we'll be trying to help putting in websites for the app, websites for Crystal Bridges website. They'll be, we'll be talking about it briefly, but we're just gonna put it down there and let them go to it and do their own search on rather than us try to describe what we're, what we're trying to show, sell them. So, they'll be, we'll be doing a little bit more of that, and, uh, that, so that the rest of the talk in there, this there is focused on Holiday Island, but not so much that it drags them out, a whole page of stuff, you know? So, it's, it's important to take advantage of our location. We're really hard, a good location, and we're trying hopefully hard to get that word out.
The, from a budget standpoint, we had, I believe, twenty-five hundred dollars in the budget for this year and for next year, you know, for, for both budgets. I don't believe we've spent any of that money. This agreement here would require seven hundred dollars this year and seven hundred next year, so
That twenty-
within the budget.
That twenty-five hundred dollars, I think we will have to spend next year because we sort of made a deal with, uh, HISA if they, that we would kind of alternate years.
Okay.
So, they took this year.
Why did we do that?
That was, uh, Danny said he had it budgeted and that he could do it in twenty-two, so. But, uh, one of us needs to, and it's, it's the, uh, membership in NADA, Northwest Arkansas Tourism Association, is what it is.
I think you, you were saying you wanted fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, we're looking for fourteen hundred dollars, but Northwest Arkansas is, uh, is an expensive deal. There's like a, I wouldn't say there's like a two thousand dollar membership.
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred dollar membership. There's, uh, another ad, uh, cost to send their, their magazine, which is gonna go bigger, I think, to the smaller. And, uh, you know, so it's, there's, uh, I bet that we spend, uh, I don't know, I suppose we spend five thousand dollars or more for that membership.
Could be.
But I think we'll get a lot more out of it if IPRO is, gets in place there and jumps into one of those meetings and stuff.
But we probably need to work out some arrangement with HISA to share the cost as long as we can, anyway. And, and also, if we were to come up with a, uh, advertising commission, uh, and collect hotel and restaurant taxes, that could be devoted to this advertising.
It has to be.
Has to be, yeah.
Okay, so, I guess we need a motion to end the fourteen hundred dollars on fishing for leads. I don't know. I don't know what else to put.
Right, we're, uh, fourteen hundred dollars for bait.
Yeah.
Pay all the strip, bait and milk, that's for sure.
Make a motion, we, we, trying to do in the efforts.
I'll second it.
Ken made a motion to approve the fourteen hundred dollar expenditure. Lynn, the seconded it, is there any other discussion?
Is that on this year then, or apart from next year?
If the seven hundred has to go in this week yet?
Well, no, no, that, that gives you the flexibility, this, this says that you don't have, first of all, this contract that you come sign, or will sign and send into them, uh, is not the official, official contract. They'll have to come back and send back in another one that says, and here's, sends you an invoice for the money. But the issue is, is they've changed it, you can play with the installations, fifty percent is not due upon signing, okay? And that signing is probably not gonna happen until January anyhow, but, so it will push it almost all in the next year. And if that creates a problem, you can go ahead and pay seven hundred in advance, but I would, you know, I'd, I'd spread it out. I mean, if you have, if you feel like you have to spend something this year, then you can spend it, or you can save the whole fourteen hundred till, uh, at least for six months in the next year, till June.
Do the fourteen hundred dollars, IPRO now and get it.
No, actually, we're gonna
You can't, even, I, IPRO won't teach you, but you have to pay directly to the advertiser.
We're gonna pay, we're gonna pay this out directly.
You have to pay it now, that way we keep our hands on it.
I would, you know, at, at this point, I would leave it as, uh, we will pay it under the most favorable terms. The longer we can stretch it out, the better. Because, quite frankly, if after three months, we got five leads, we're probably gonna be on the phone talking to them about whether or not we really owe fourteen hundred dollars.
That's right. And we'll be reviewing those leads too by the replies we get from people and how they, how they react when we call, or we send them something and, to make sure that they're not, uh, they didn't ask, they actually asked for us, they just asked, got sent to us by, by them collectively picking anybody that came to Arkansas and said, let's put down a hundred dollars for Holiday Island. These are supposed, they are supposed to be Holiday Island people, and we should get that reaction from these people as we talk to them, send them packages, stuff.
Okay, so, clarify, clarify for me, who the check will be written to?
The check will be written to a, the, the advertising company, which is CJRW, they're the main advertiser for the state of Arkansas.
Okay.
And they do the actual labor of getting all the fulling's leads off the, uh, website.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Home favorite, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, I said aye.
Thank you.
Second was by
Motion second.
But, yeah.
Ken made the motion, I seconded it. Yeah, that was it.
I'll give you the full set of this paperwork. Like I said, it's more of a preliminary, not the final, final.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Vern, can you punch the button on that mic?
Sorry, yes, sir.
Alright, moving on, um, establishing a police department. Hopefully, this discussion won't go on until eleven o'clock. We got some, I think, who, who, uh? Okay, let me hand, uh, who needs, who's seeing, looking at this stuff on electronic?
I have a copy.
Does anybody else need a hard copy?
I brought a card copy myself.
No, this is a plan, a project.
Want to hand these out to anybody that wants one? Linda, you want to hand these out to somebody?
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Some of these got them all.
You want, you want to keep this low through the hours? And when we get the task get up?
Oh, it'd be better if I don't have, I don't have a screen, then, no, I don't have, man.
No, I don't have it. You like one?
Sure.
I got this one.
Oh, I have two left.
Okay, I got it. Yeah, I already have it. And it's, uh, here, take your camera and put it on. Put it on. I don't know, you need some more leads?
You have one for me, Linda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've got, uh, two hundred and forty.
I'm, uh, which, which are we looking at?
We're very good at such a target.
How many pages are we supposed to have?
Two.
So we're gonna have one more.
Less than ten, one, okay.
Dan?
Huh?
You got one, the last one you gave me. I don't know, anybody else need one? I got one. How many pages you got?
Two, four. Three, four. Try to make sense out of all those papers, because these are my notes, my working papers the last couple of days.
Mayor, if you think there are things you might consider, uh, especially if the longer the police department, the best to go ahead and do these next two items, and then go into that.
You want to do that, you want to?
Yeah.
Do the, uh, change the order of, uh, the agenda?
Yeah, I would definitely do that.
That's okay with me.
I'm fine.
Yeah.
All right, all right. All right, we've got too many papers in the book.
Looking for resolution eleven.
This is supposed to say, Linda changed it on the-
Yeah, the one you sent out said twelve. Yeah.
All right, next, then, um, next on the agenda, we will cover, uh, resolution number twenty-two-two-oh-eleven, a resolution approving the appointing of a prosecuting attorney for the city of Holiday Island and establishing a salary. So I have a motion to consider, to approve this resolution.
I move we approve. You can go ahead, Jerry.
Okay, Jerry made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can you make a second? No, we really want you to read it. I can read it. Okay, sure. Resolution number two thousand twenty-two-oh-eleven. A resolution approving the appointment of a prosecuting attorney for the city of Holiday Island and establishing a salary. Whereas the city of Holiday Island passed ordinance two thousand twenty-two-oh-fifteen, establishing the position of prosecuting attorney for the city of Holiday Island, and whereas the city of Holiday Island wishes to appoint an attorney to that position and establish the salary. Therefore, being resolved by the city council of the city of Holiday Island that Glenn Shield be appointed as prosecuting attorney for the city of Holiday Island at a salary of a monthly rate not to exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars. We have further resolved that subject to the approval by the city council, a monthly rate of compensation can be adjusted if the case loads exceeds thirty per month. Passed and approved by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and the state of eleven-twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. Approved, approved by the mayor and assessed by the recorder treasurer. I think we've got one word left out there that I took the liberty of inserting about the salary. It says monthly rate, but why would you need salary? Now, it says, that other monthly salary should be at a, okay, monthly rate, okay. Okay.
And then don't-
Discussion on the-
Don't forget to change the date at the bottom to, to today's date, twenty-two.
Yeah, I did change that.
Okay.
I just didn't change the number.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So it's a monthly rate not to exceed seven fifty, it's like a retainer, it's, uh, it's gonna be seven fifty a month, unless we go over the number of cases?
Yes.
Okay.
Rather than call it salary, should we call it retainer?
I don't know what the right word is, but.
I don't think we'd want it.
It doesn't say salary.
Salary.
It doesn't say salary, it says a monthly rate.
A monthly rate, which is, and it's great for the county's financial services, you want a salary.
I think it's good, I did.
I do too.
It's a salary, then we've got payroll taxes.
He doesn't say salary in it.
It's not, it's not a salary.
Right. The attorney, they normally have a retainer. Well, in the title, it says salary.
Oh, right.
Good point.
And establishing a-
Monthly rate.
Yeah, monthly rate. Okay, good catch.
Okay, good.
All right, any other, uh, discussion? You guys go call vote. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
County member Elwin, is that so? Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Fidman?
Aye.
All persons are in favor, Mr. Mayor? Okay, the resolution passes, we have a prosecuting attorney. Um, and just as a side note, the district court cost sharing agreement, uh, interlocal agreement between us and Erika Springs, um, I, I delivered it to Butch Berry. He sent it to their city attorney. And, uh, I called Butch last week, Thursday, I think, and he was in Little Rock. So I haven't had a chance to follow up with him yet to see if he's gotten it back from his attorney. Well, hopefully we'll get that signed, yet this month and we're in the summer to throw it and be ready to start prosecuting cases.
Right, well, I'm just, I'm sorry. But starting, I heard we started with it, having cases.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe in January, maybe February, I heard.
Okay, next on the agenda is, um, I have the pleasure of appointing, um, members to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, uh, sometimes known as BOZA. And, um, uh, I am going to, uh, I asked two gentlemen who happen to be here tonight, um, if they would serve on that board, Steve Crowe and Don House. Um, both level-headed, intelligent, uh, individuals. I think they'll be a good addition to, uh, give us some, some additional insight into how our ordinances work and stuff like that. And then I would also appoint Lynn Dumas as a, as a member of the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Um, our earlier ordinance established a, uh, uh, what is it called? Staffing level of three.
Yes.
So, um, Steve and Don, I assume you're still agreeable to, to serve? Thank you. All right, um, then I would guess, with any kind of motion that we accept these three nominees to the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
I move that we approve Don House and Steve Crowe and Lynn Dumas as the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ken knows you've made a second, is there any discussion? Home favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes had it, congratulations, gentlemen.
Yay!
Um, I can tell you right now that Lynn is the expert on all of this, by far. Uh, so he will get with you and me, and, um, we'll have to set up an initial meeting of the board and, um, I suppose go through some formalities of discussing when the board is gonna meet.
We have to set our rules and, and choose our chair. And all of our meetings have to be published in public notices in newspapers, so it'll be a, a lead time after that happens.
And then after, after those formalities are in place and, and we have the, uh, the process in place to be able to hear appeals, then there really isn't a whole lot to do until somebody is seeking a variance, uh, to, uh, to one of our ordinances, so, um.
Our members of the BOZA, is that what it's called?
Board of Zoning Adjustment.
And, uh, are they subject to our social media?
Yes, they are, because they're board, they're appointed members. And gentlemen, we'll have a, a financial statement that you have to fill out and give to the Recorder Treasurer in January. It's called a Statement of Financial Interest, it's a list of, uh, what your investments are. Not the amounts, but where you're invested.
Yeah, it's pretty general, so. Okay, um, then move it on. Get that down. Now we can get into the discussion on the possibility of having a police department. I'm gonna preface this discussion by making a couple of comments. Um, we have been trying as a city to take over the sheriff's contract for about eighteen months now, and, um, we've had a lot of problems. Um, I'm not gonna sit here and lament all of the problems, but what it kind of all boils down to is there were way, way, way too many people involved in the decision-making process. You know, it started out with the city and the, and Hi-Sid and the county. If you add all of the people together, and, you know, that's probably about the point, that would have to agree, and thrown in the mix is three lawyers. And, um, you know, and then we decided that Hi-Sid would back out of it and it would just be between the city and the county. And, um, so we worked on that angle for about six months and thought we had a, a good contract worked out. Basically, the last revision was written by the county, uh, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney. And then the election came along, and, uh, now we have a new, um, county judge-elect and a new sheriff-elect. And, um, when they got a chance, well, I don't know that the, that the judge-elect looked at it, but at any rate, yeah, he did, I don't think the sheriff-elect has looked at it yet. But at any rate, word came back to me last week that, um, there were some things that they didn't like about it now, and they wanted to wait until next year to, uh, to negotiate a different contract. And, you know, of course, they're, they're all new to it, so for them, this was only the first delay, and it didn't really mean much to them. And for us, it was one more nail in a coffin full of frustration. And so that, you know, kind of pushed us in the direction of saying, you know, we, can we really, can we do this by ourselves? Can we, can we just have a police department and get the county out of it, and then we'd have control? And we wouldn't have any issues with who's responsible for what and things like that. So I, um, so I started working on putting together some numbers. And, uh, and so doing a lot of research in the, uh, you know, as to what the laws are relative to having a police department and stuff like that. And I am, I am still totally, um, a, an amateur at knowing what it takes to set up a police department. But I wanted to preface this by saying that these numbers here that are being, you know, presented tonight are purely for discussion only. They could be off by a country mile. You know, and my best guesses as to what it would cost to, to hire people and to outfit, uh, equipment and stuff like that, uh, I don't think it's off by a country mile, but it could be off by a couple hundred yards. So, um, anyway, uh, it, it's just a feasibility study. The plan going into next year, as it stands right now until we decide to do something different, is still to go with the county contract, because when, uh, when Jack Nathan heard that, um, that the, the county was going to delay this until next year, he talked to some people over there and, um, and, and they all decided that the changes they wanted to make were very minor and that they could probably have those changes made by next week and still have signatures of the contract by as early as next week. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold my breath, but it looks promising that we could still have the contract with the county if we want to, uh, if we wanna exercise that option. Um, I put together, uh, some background information, the, the, this, this document here, I don't think we'll spend any time on, the one that has, uh, two Arkansas codes on the top, you know, as far as, uh, the city's being authorized to have a police department and stuff like that. And some notes of mine as to what a, you know, what would, what would people expect out of a police department? What would we expect out of the officers and stuff like that? It is printed front and back, so, um, um, you can read that at your leisure. I don't know that that'll bear much on our discussion tonight. Um, what I think we need to talk the most about is, um, the, uh, the financial aspects. Now, let me familiarize, re-familiarize myself with my own spreadsheet here. Um. There's one that, that, um, it's called Police Department First Year Startup. It's, you know, you almost need a magnifying glass to see it, but I, I can't print legal size, so this is as big as I can get it on a, on a piece of paper. It's again printed front and back, but it's kind of a summation of, um, what I thought a first-year, uh, two-man police department, what a, what a full year cost would be of a two-man police department. Now, it's not exactly accurate, because I, I only have a part-year salary for the second officer, but, um, this, this is, you can see the kinds of things that I, uh, that I considered when I threw these numbers together. These, uh, potential salaries for the police chief and the, uh, the officer, that, that, uh, full-time officer salary that's shown as thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty, if, that's only for nine months of salary, I think that the full annual- I think that the full annual ice salary is forty-one thousand. I went online and found several, there's a list of those somewhere, two in this paperwork, a list of several cities that are coming to hire policemen right now, large cities and small. And a, about the lowest that you'll see for a patrol officer starting salary is forty-one thousand. So that's where I, that's the number I used to go in. All the rest of these, as far as estimates on vehicle maintenance and stuff like that, these are, you know, I think fairly good guesses. The rent that we're paying right now, that's, that would be the actual rent. Right now, we get a discount because the landlord is taking, if we give the landlord at the end of the year a letter that says that, that he gifted us part of the rent for the year, then it's, it's cheaper. But without that gift, it would be six thousand dollars a year. And that's the rent that we currently pay on the substation for the, for the sheriff that, that the deputies use right now up in the park.
Are you, you anticipate that we're going to have to get separate space if we go in the direction of creating a new department?
I, and I am saying that we would take over that space. That the county.
Okay, well, the HICID, aren't they still paying half of that?
They, not in next year's budget.
They are now, they are now, but they're dropping their, their deputy.
Since they were, since they were dropping the deputy contract, we assumed that we would pick up a hundred percent of the cost of the.
And I guess I'm going to swing, but I, I thought that they did say they were going to drop, provide the contract. But then was there a follow-up that said that they, their attorney files and they couldn't do that, shouldn't do?
I haven't heard anything. Ken, is, is the district budgeting for the sheriff's contract for next year?
Budget is approved next Monday, but I don't think so.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the district pulled the sheriff's contract out of the budget.
No, that's, that's the last word, that's what I was trying to clarify.
Yeah. I think that's still where it stands.
Right.
And I assumed that after that, we would pick up a hundred percent of the rental agreement on the, on the space up there. Now, in actuality, we don't pay six thousand dollars a year, we only pay.
We're paying a hundred and fifty a month right now, but I think that's what the district is paying. And I don't recall if that was just half of what the guy, you know, said the full rent would be, because six hundred a month would be seventy-two hundred dollars.
I, I think it was, I think he was going to give credit for two hundred dollars a month. I think it was, I think the full rent was, was five, five hundred dollars. And then the rest of these numbers here are, you know, like I said, they're, they're, they're guesses. It takes money to put in the, the, you know, the computers and the internet and the telephones and everything else.
In your operating expense, you're showing the sheriff's contract reimbursed HICID. We have both of these. Which, which. Your investment in, in sense, operating expense, sheriff contract reimbursed HICID. Then we'll, if. Okay, that's, I'll be, it would make it difficult, we reimburse HICID, I would go ahead and go sign the contract with the city to account yourself. We'd have one of the others.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's nothing in this, in this annual cost for running a two-man operation. There's nothing in there for, for the sheriff contract.
There was something in there.
On the timeline that I put together, which we'll talk about in a minute. You know, I did show keeping the sheriff's contract for one deputy in force for a number of months to give us time to, to get our act together.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, because we're. There's no way we can get Carr, hire somebody and, and patrol him on January first.
They'll sign the contract, I think that's what.
So with this, with this plan here, which is, like, these numbers are even reasonably close. This, this budget would be, for, for next year would be sixty-nine thousand dollars incremental to what it would be if we just stayed with the, with the sheriff's contract.
The, I, I know the budget you put together. At that, the both funds, I think it was projected to twenty-twenty-three, are getting up close to nine hundred thousand. I think, I think, I think we're figuring out how to make it work.
The, you go to the timeline, it might make, this all makes perfectly good sense to me when I'm sitting in the office looking at my computer. But when I look at these little mini-printed pages here, it, it, I got to refresh my memory as to what I was doing, what I was even thinking. But this, this last one here, this timeline, was my attempt to see what it would take, you know, what, what it would actually cost next year based on phasing things in. Like, we wouldn't, we wouldn't hire two people on January first. And we wouldn't have two cars on January first and things like that. So I, this, this timeline here assumes that we would maintain the sheriff's contract for one deputy, not for two deputies, but for one, for six months. We would engage a, an, an expert, an expert that would be a potential chief of police. We would, we would engage them on a contract basis, probably as, as early as January, to help us actually assemble the department, to research and advise as to what we all need as opposed to going by my estimate, to put numbers to that, actual numbers. And basically get us ready to open shop. And then we would actually onboard the first employee, the police chief, in the second quarter, in, in April on this, on this timeline. And by that time, we would have to have a vehicle for that, for that person. And, and then we would start a transition to pay off the county. And then we would, you know, we, that would give us from, you know, January and April to, to get the, actually, it would give us the first quarter to get the, you know, the office up there all set up. And then somewhere around May to June or in the second quarter, we would try to bring on the second patrol officer, but we would not hire, we would not buy the second patrol vehicle until next year. Rationale being that the two officers wouldn't be on duty at the same time. So they can, they can both use the same patrol vehicle for the first year. If there is a need for, let's say that while the, the second officer is on duty using the patrol vehicle, the police chief needs to do something of official business, they could use their personal vehicle and we'd reimburse them the mileage. Would be my assumption going into this. But that, that saves quite a bit of money in the first year if we don't have to get a second vehicle.
Is, is there something we should be doing now, I mean, not purchasing vehicles, with the information on how to buy them through the state contract?
Jack, I've talked to Jack Eaton about it, he, he knows how to do that, he's going to get me some information. And he highly recommends that you buy used vehicles from the state. He said you can get the vehicles from the state patrol, they're, they're in excellent shape and, and they'll run a long time.
If that, that, they're stripped down, they don't have the radio, it will still happen.
I would imagine it will still happen.
I mean, that's how it was in Oklahoma, it was lost, lost in here. You're just not, you know. I would, you know, I would think that by the thirty-seventh of February, is that including the, the equipping, I guess? Because.
The, the money on this spreadsheet here, on this timeline, in the phasing spreadsheet, includes the equipping of the vehicle and stuff like that.
But that, that's not in the operating expenses above, is it?
I just was wondering, because the county, you know, they were going to get a vehicle for forty-one thousand, I didn't know.
Yeah.
But that wasn't equipped.
Right.
I was looking at the hundred and seventy-two or a hundred and eighty-nine above does not include any of the equipment, correct?
Which a hundred and eighty-nine does.
Yeah, yeah, that just has the ten percent contingency. It's got operating expenses.
Yeah, the hundred and eighty-nine does not have the, the vehicle, but that's down below our initial investment.
Yeah.
These, these two, these two, this timeline one and this other spreadsheet don't necessarily tie together. On one, I was trying to look at it from an annual standpoint, and the other one, I was trying to look at it as a, a time phase, first year look at it, so the, the numbers don't necessarily tie. And for tonight, I think it's important that they do. But with the time phase one, like I'm, like I have it projected here, the, we would be, the way, the way next year's budget is projected right now, we, we would be paying the county a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars in, in, in compensation for the two deputies, plus spending about forty thousand dollars on a vehicle.
It's forty-one, one equipped and then he had eight of the equipment, so.
I'd have to go back and look at it, we'd go, I've been using forty thousand as a, as a number.
It would be, first year would be as, as much as you're projecting here for us to do ourselves.
Well, it, it, it comes out real close.
Yeah.
If, if, if we do, if we did this plan on this timeline, and these numbers are even close, next year, we would have to use fifty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars, which is way too accurate a number for the precision that, I don't want to hint at this. But anyway, we would be spending about fifty-three thousand dollars out of reserves to make this plan happen next year. And then by twenty-twenty-four, in order to pull, to, to, to fund a full year of two deputies, we would have to come up with an incremental eighty-seven thousand or eighty-eight thousand. So next year, if we go with the, with the sheriff's contract, it looks to me like we would be spending about forty thousand dollars out of reserves. If we went with this plan here, which is a scaled-down deputy support for, for six months, well, and then starting our own, phasing our own.
But you're having, you're having both costs there for that first six months, right?
But, well, half, half of the deputy cost. But the difference is only, the, the, if we go with the, with the contract with the county, we would have to be taking about forty thousand dollars out of the reserves the first year. Let me finish. So forty thousand dollar reserves the first year, one-time expenditure for a vehicle. If we do this plan, which is a modified contract with the county, scaled way back, and then start to implement our own police department, we would have to spend about fifty-three thousand dollars out of reserves. Part of that covers the vehicle, part of it covers other expenses to, you know, to set everything up.
Doesn't that contract, the county say that they can get, that they can get custody of that anywhere?
If, if we.
Just use the second contract, because that one, I didn't get that one, I guess.
The clause in the contract says that if you cancel the contract within, I don't know if it's the first six months or the first twelve months, but if we cancel it very early on, they would pay us back thirty-seven thousand dollars for the vehicle we bought. They keep the vehicle, but reimburse us thirty-seven thousand. And so I would really like to avoid, if there's any chance we're going to do this, I would like to avoid buying that vehicle, having to buy that vehicle for the county.
Well, that, that was what I was getting at, I mean, if they want to maintain six months, that would be as-is, where their, their provide would be. The contract that they've been talking on would not be what we're negotiating for the next six months.
No. So I think, kind of, kind of in a nutshell, this is a lot of, a lot of numbers that I'm having a hard time explaining in a cohesive way because we're on a real short timeline to throw this together. But kind of in a nutshell, you know, the least cost way, we, we have to go with forty thousand dollars into reserves next year. The next best way, or the, the best way probably, is only increases that to fifty-three thousand dollars. So it's not that much more expensive. And we have plenty of money in reserves to be able to cover this. The challenge is going to be, before we, you know, jump in and sink or swim, the challenge is going to be coming up with eighty-eight thousand dollars a year, every year, for ongoing, for, for the ongoing operation of a two-man police department. So.
Does, does the eighty-seven thousand though include all the startup costs? You've taken that out?
No, I've taken that.
Okay, all right.
It's just the ongoing operating.
Okay, the salaries and. And that's for two, two officers?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if we're not the contract, if now we don't split the revenue, then.
We, we would, we, we should see an increase in, in revenue for fines, but it's very hard to predict what that's going to be.
The problem, Ken, is that is based on the discussions we've had all year, is that if we maintain that sheriff's contract, there are certain things that they're going, they're saying they won't do.
Yeah. This, having our own department is significantly cleaner for the state, because we could use our own police officers then for officially inside. our own police officers then for issuing citations and summonses and making arrests and making people appear in court.
So maybe that's a capability, Scotty.
I don't know.
For me, for me, the importance of, you don't have the variability, every year or two, you have to renegotiate another contract with the outside source. We'll have personnel issues because it's people, but, you know, we're not going to have to deal with the county level.
Probably, you know, dealing with the county is probably the most frustrating in that ever to me. I mean, they, and basically, my opinion is, they don't want to do it.
No, I don't know what, you know, I don't know that that's the case, but it's definitely not, we are definitely not their priority.
And they're not, they're not willing to do services that we need to do. We can negotiate this thing and phase it in, which is why I was going to press for it anyway.
I guess I'd like to be a little bit clearer in defense of the county. I don't, I don't think that it's, from their perspective, I don't think that it's a matter of them not wanting to do what we need them to do as far as enforcing city ordinances. I think that they feel that they cannot legally do it. And our attorney said he thought they could, but it wasn't very clear. He had to use some, you know, court cases and stuff like that to come to that conclusion. So it came down to one of those cases where we could probably win the argument either way, you know, depending on.
I've been in all the, that's twenty years or so, and it's never been acceptable.
Yeah. Well, you know, interagency things is highly dependent on interpersonal relationships and being on their priority list. I can say that it's been working very successfully for Horst Uvind since twenty thirteen. They've been contracting with his county for a long time. And they seem to have a very good relationship and it seems to be working. However, it is immensely cleaner and easier and much more within our control if we can, if we can go in this direction.
So.
But this is, if this is, go ahead.
I was just going to say, what do you need to hear from us tonight to proceed with this?
I was just filling in the back.
Right.
But this is the line. If you want, I think that we need to firm up some of these numbers as fast as we can. And I have kind of an expert, I'm going to keep him anonymous for now, but I have kind of an expert in my back pocket that I think I can sit down with and we can, we can try to firm up some of these numbers a little bit. However, if the council wants to head in this direction, then I think I should call Ronne Griffin probably next week and tell her that we, that we're heading in this direction. We can still go ahead and sign the contract because, you know, we can sign the contract with an agreement that they won't hire the second deputy and we won't buy the vehicle unless we come to the point where we decide that that has to be done. Up until that time, we'll pay for one deputy just like then, but at a new rate. And I think that, I think they'll agree to that. But the last thing they want to do is, you know, hire extra people and get more equipment and then have us pull out. You know, that doesn't, that doesn't do anybody any good. So I think that they would be agreeable to working with us on this.
Dan, I have a few comments. I really like the idea of transitioning it over time in a phased fashion. And I like the idea of going ahead and planning to have the sheriff's contract through all of next year, actually. Because I think, I think it's going to take that much time for us to establish a police department of our own in terms of, what I'm worried about are the cons that I thought of in having our own police department. And there are cons in the sense of there are things that we need to plan for so that we don't get caught unprepared. And cost, of course, was one of them, but we don't have any experience in running a police department. We, nobody on the council knows a thing about it. We're going to be depending upon the experience of others. Whoever operates as our officers in the future need to have had experience in training. Or if we get somebody fresh at a, you know, reasonable starting salary, they will need training and they will need ongoing training that has to be provided for. We're going to need policies set up for a police department of how they, how they operate and what they can do and what they can't do, how they're supposed to conduct themselves in all matters concerning police.
And a lot of that is dictated by law.
Yeah.
When it comes to police departments, there's a lot of code.
I think that could be copied, yes, from other departments.
Just like the benefits.
But we have to be cautious.
The benefits are a lot of it is codified.
I'm worried about liability and is there liability insurance that we would need to take out also?
We would actually check on that.
And because what I'm afraid most of is, we could get hit with a lawsuit by somebody not doing something correctly.
Well, that's assuming we hire inexperienced people, but I would think.
Well, even an experienced person could make a mistake.
I understand, but.
I just want to mitigate risks is all I'm talking about. So, you know, I'm just thinking that in order, I know how long it took us to set up the city from scratch. To set up a police department from scratch is the same process. I mean, it's a learning curve. You've got to copy stuff from other places. You've got to put it together so that it makes sense and then you've got to carry it out. And I think it might take a whole year to do that. And I think we'd be safer to take a whole year.
I absolutely agree. I think if it did, we could extend that contract easily.
Well, there's no deadline. I mean, that's a three-year contract, so.
The terms we would be so long to terminate.
Sure, sure.
I don't think we're eating ourselves into it.
Also, the other thing I was thinking of, is there a way that we could empower a chief or the initial person onboard with us partway through next year so that we have control of at least one person that could make arrests and cite and collect fines for, in conjunction with operating under a contract with the sheriff's department? Is that possible?
I don't think.
That's what his plan says.
Basically, that's what I have.
Well, I just, I just wondered if that was your understanding, that we could do it that way?
I had the deputy patrolling for six months and the police chief coming onboard in the second quarter.
But they would be working for us under, as a police department?
Police.
Okay, great. That sounds good. I just wanted to understand that. And I'm still wrapping my head around the spreadsheet and the expenses and what's what on that, but.
Probably need to come up with a better format.
But those were my major concerns and questions.
Okay. I don't know that we need any kind of a vote or, we've already passed the ordinance establishing the police department, so that's a done deal.
You know, depending on the, you know, see, county would go in, you know, your contract which is.
Yeah, I would need to, my next step would be.
You can tell them that it's temporary, you know, I mean, sometime during next year we will prove it. They might change their mind, but I don't see why they would, so.
I'd like to make a motion that the city pursue a phased-in approach to having its own police department. So we just put it on record, that's what I think we should do. That's my motion.
Okay. Then we had a motion that the city pursue a phased-in program to establish a police department and Jerry's submitted. No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hopefully by the December meeting, I can have a much more robust timeline and easier to follow paperwork. And let's see, what else? I will probably appoint a committee once, if the person I've been talking to wants to help, you know, help us, you know, get this going, and I think he will, I think I'll set up a committee to work with him and, you know, a committee like, you know, with people that I know that have experience in things like IT and HR and.
You need, you need some.
So a committee member might be named Linda.
You need somebody on that committee to do the research for what we need to put in place as far as ordinances, you know, to get all that background work done.
Yeah. Yes, we can, we can look at that, you know. There's, you know, there's a, when you look at the actual Arkansas codes, there's a lot of stuff in there about how, you know, mandated paid time off, mandated pensions, mandated this, mandated that, mandated sick days, requirements, qualification requirements to be certified as a law enforcement officer. That's highly detailed as to how that's done. But if you're looking for a cookbook on how to set up a police department, it doesn't exist.
My concern is.
At least I have a problem.
My concern is that the city has the things in place so that an officer can write a speeding ticket, that we have to have an ordinance that says we're going to establish the speed limits, you know, whatever that language is, those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that is an issue because, you know, whose laws are, whose laws are they enforcing?
Exactly.
Well, if other cities have that on their books as an ordinance, we can copy them.
That's what I'm saying, someone needs to do that research and.
Sounds like a Lind job to me.
Yeah, we could do that now. With that said, I've read a lot of city, you know, codes in the last five years. I don't remember seeing very much about setting up a police department or, you know, or adopting traffic laws and stuff like that. There's, there is a kind of a general umbrella of, of, it falls under the state police as to what, you know, what's legal, what's illegal, what, and it even gets into what are the fines for this kind of violation and stuff like that. And, you know, it's kind of just pretty general that, you know, a city police officer enforces the laws of the state of Arkansas, the county and the city. And so now, do we have to have a, somebody has to decide that the speed limit out here is going to be thirty miles an hour.
Right, exactly.
And how do you do that? Do you do that by passing an ordinance?
That's the ordinance that they're.
Yeah. I can't say that I've ever read one.
Right now, that's, but the, the, the speed limits we have out here now are set by the county.
I think they were set by the district and the county.
No, they weren't.
They were setting them.
The county set them.
The county went out here and drove all the roads and said.
They may have, they may have set them at the request of the district. The district had no enforcement, they couldn't do it, but the county did.
Yeah. I agree with that, but the county here, are you ready? Okay.
What's the intention?
Yes. Comments from the public?
Yeah, I just now, I'm looking at this, it's showing that we have a part-time police department. We don't have a twenty-four-hour police department.
Right.
So as a resident, who do I call when nobody's on duty?
The, first of all, the assumption is that, well, first of all, we'll go one more step. Dispatch was done by the county. So if there's no officer on duty here, the county has to respond. And now, that's the law. In practical terms, that response deputy might be fifty miles away down by Huntsville.
I have that too.
And, but from that perspective, that's the way it is today. It's even worse, at least we've got two officers where one could be on call here. But I do have a phase three that I didn't put in here, and that's a twenty-four-seven police department. It's probably a minimum of four people to do a twenty-four seven. I have, I looked at every police department in Arkansas, there's a listing of all the police departments in Arkansas and how many full-time officers they have, how many part-time, how many of them are lieutenants and corporals and all that kind of stuff, detectives. And I don't believe I, I think there was one that only had three, but most, most had four or five was probably, for small towns, five was the most common as far as total employees. But all, but all five weren't necessarily patrolling. You know, one of them could have been just a police department clerk or something.
Mr. Mayor, if you want to write this down, go to the website, cops, C-O-P-S, dot U-S-V-O-J, dot gov.
Cops.
Dot U-S-V-O-J, dot gov. It's from the Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Releasing Services.
Okay.
It's a handbook, guidelines for starting operating a new police department.
Woo! Whoa! You're a much more savvy internet researcher than I am.
And quick, too.
I spent two hours trying to find something and I, I couldn't find anything because I was focused on state of Arkansas.
What are the point about Google? Did you just say, happy to establish a, a new city, establish a police department?
Yeah.
That endorsement became much.
All right. Yes.
Ken Brown, starting with Scott's point. I have a question for the council as to when is there any coordinator and when the building inspector would be going out to homes and doing their job?
The building inspector has been doing inspections for a couple of months already.
Okay.
And that's all working pretty smooth.
Okay.
The code enforcement officer, we have, we've been waiting on the sheriff's contract because without having a police department, we can't have a district court. Without a district court, you can't issue citations. So we would have just been blowing smoke if we would have started knocking on doors.
Well, sorry, I got his title wrong, but we, I heard from two people today that on the internet, on the, on Facebook and so forth, there was a discussion about if he comes out, our employee, and is trying to enforce things that. if he comes out, our, our employee, and, uh, is trying to enforce things, that, uh, he will be shot.
Okay.
That's, that's a quote from, uh, the internet. So what I'm wondering about is, uh, when he does, when you get this all set up, are we going to have to have a deputy or one of our police officers go out? But that first, to, to the.
There are, yes, there are gonna be situations where Aaron would not go on unaccompanied security.
Good, thank you.
However, if stuff like that starts to show up on our social media, we would almost want to get our attorneys involved and see if that, does that constitute terroristic threats?
Absolutely.
They can't be talking about shooting city employees.
Exactly.
On, on the internet.
They're person in jail, shouldn't.
Okay. Good discussion. It's not even ten o'clock yet. Uh, so now we're up to, uh, public comments, three minutes timeline. Any public comments? Good.
I might just comment, there was article in the paper last week, I believe, when we were talking about fines, traffic fines. Two cities were cited for having more than fifty percent of their revenue from traffic fines, so they cannot write duty traffic tickets for a year.
More than half the revenue.
It's called the Dumas law, no, yeah, Damascus, Damascus, the Damascus law.
Damascus, yeah, there's.
There's a little, there's a Dumas law. There's a Damascus law that, there's a little town halfway between Harrison and Conway on sixty-five called Damascus. And several years ago, they made like ninety percent of their city budget by sitting on sixty-five writing speeding tickets. And they passed a law that said that you can't make more than fifty percent. Forty-nine and a half percent, that's our goal.
No. Cut, cut them off in two.
Party record, we don't have a goal. Lose the jury. Yeah, no, we have to have, uh, scheduling, our council members comments. Do we have any council members in comments? Scheduling.
What are we doing?
Is our, our regular meeting fall or is it a time?
I don't know.
Calendar. Calendar for December?
It would be the twentieth, that's. Thirty-two, thirty?
Yes.
Twentieth, yeah.
Yes, the regular scheduled meeting would be, uh, December twentieth.
I guess I have no reason to. Thirty-first of January, actually.
Actually. But I don't know that I could pay any bills in January, we now have a budget.
We'll, we'll get it passed in December. So the regular meeting on the twentieth, just like always.
Based on what the time comes back on, I see.
We can all recall a special meeting again. Okay, anything else? No special meetings, no workshops, any announcements? Motion to adjourn? Someone during the motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Lynn will second it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.